Going to order the business meeting for Diamond Lake School District 76. Roll call, please.
Ms. Agarola, Ms. Bayless here, Mr. Becker.
Here.
Ms. Hale.
Here.
Mr. Hauptman.
Here.
Mr. Cundella.
Ms. Sullivan.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we now open the floor to public comments on agenda items. Do we have any public comments this evening? Hey, I'm assuming all of you are here then for our presentation, so we will move on to our presentations.
We have two sets of presentations this evening. The first one is our recognition of our Sparkle on Core Values Spotlight. We always focus on the core value of the month, and this month for March, it was equity. So we recognize staff members from each school as well as students from each school who exemplify the Sparkle on Core Values. So we'll start out with Diamond Lake, and if I can have Mrs. Morley come up and share her recognition for her staff member.
It is with a great honor and admiration that I present this Diamond Award for Equity to Evelyn Guadarama. Evelyn doesn't believe in equity, she lives it every day. She creates a space where every student feels valued, supported, and empowered to succeed. She fosters a true sense of community, ensuring that all students have access to the tools and resources they need to thrive. But Evelyn's impact doesn't stop at her classroom door. She's a dedicated colleague. She's always willing to go above and beyond to support those around her, including teaching on Saturdays and supporting her staff member colleagues who may want to become bilingual. Whether she's... Evelyn uplifts those around her. She understands that when educators grow, students benefit, and she is deeply committed to strengthening our entire school community. Evelyn, your dedication to creating an equitable, inclusive, and compassionate learning environment makes a difference in the lives of so many. Your work is a reflection of the very best in education, and we are beyond grateful to have you as a part of our DLS team. Please join me in celebrating our Diamond Award winner for equity, Evelyn.
Well, I wasn't prepared for this, but it's an honor to be up here to receive a Diamond Award. I can truly say that, you know, it's been a rough year, but we've all been committed and ready to go with what's next. Thank you, Sunny, for the recognition. I truly appreciate it. Bhavna, I truly appreciate you and the board. Thank you.
For West Oak Intermediate School, I have the honor to recognize an incredible individual whose dedication, compassion, and unwavering commitment to equity make a profound impact on our school community, Mrs. Monica Manfredini. Equity is not just about giving everyone the same resources. It's about ensuring that every individual has what they need to thrive. Monica lives and breathes this core value every single day through her work with one of our students who faces significant physical challenges, is learning English, and is medically fragile. Where others might see limitations, Monica sees possibilities. Monica is one of those invaluable West Oak Intermediate School Learning Associates. She works tirelessly to ensure that this student is not just present in the learning environment, but truly included emotionally, socially, and academically. Whether it's adapting lessons, finding creative ways to engage him in the classroom activities, or ensuring he can participate in physical activities in a way that makes him feel valued and involved, Monica never lets barriers define what's possible. Her dedication extends beyond the classroom. It's in every small act of kindness, every thoughtful adjustment, and every moment where she ensures that this student feels seen, supported, and capable and loved. Monica's work reminds us that equity is more than fairness. It's about belonging, dignity, and the opportunity for all. Monica, your passion and advocacy make a lasting difference, not just for the student, but for everyone who witnesses your example. You inspire us all to do better, to be better, and to ensure that every student, no matter their challenges, has the opportunity to learn, grow, feel included, and loved. Please join me in celebrating and thanking Mrs. Monica Manfredini for her outstanding dedication to equity and inclusion. Congratulations, Monica, and please continue to sparkle on.
I just want to say thank you very much to Dr. Sharmel Lewis for being my name. I really love coming to work, and all the students are so wonderful in their own way. And I just try to tell them, just try to do your best and belong. Thank you.
Okay, so the person that we have nominated at the middle school, she actually won this award four short years ago. I believe it was her first month of our teaching in our district. She's back for a second one now, and it is also her birthday. I think her family's here, probably fresh off your birthday dinner, so happy birthday. It was, you know, it is a great pleasure to present this month's Diamond Award to Erin Grubb for her outstanding contributions to equity within our school community. Erin has consistently demonstrated a deep commitment to creating an inclusive and engaging environment for all students in her English Language Arts classrooms. Through her innovation, creativity, and engaging teaching methods, Erin goes above and beyond to connect with students with diverse backgrounds, ensuring that each one feels valued and empowered to succeed. Her dedication to foster a supportive and inclusive atmosphere highlights her passion for making education accessible to every learner regardless of their circumstances. Beyond the classroom, Erin has shown an incredible commitment to supporting her students' overall well-being and personal growth. As a cross-country coach, as well as a fitness instructor outside of the school, she instilled the importance of physical health and teamwork while also providing students with the opportunity to find confidence and belonging outside of traditional academic settings. This year, Erin has embraced the various leadership opportunities within the school and has also been willing to step up and serve as a role model for both students and staff alike. One of the things that she has co-chaired me with is that the Student SEO Panel that you guys are gonna hear here in a few moments. Her tireless efforts and unwavering passion for equity makes Erin a true champion for all, and I'm proud to honor her with this month's Diamond Award. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you to staff and the students and administration. It truly has been the best four years here. I'm very grateful to have started off in an amazing district, so just thank you. And I'm glad that you guys are here. I'm excited to see all of it, so thank you.
Mrs. Morley, would you like to do the honor to Diamond Lake's announce your, or excuse me, introduce your teach... Oh, is it gonna be Mrs. Jahand? Come on up. Now we'll be recognizing our students for the core value of equity.
Hi, today I have the honor of recognizing a student who truly embodies the spirit of equity, our Diamond Award winner Evelyn Flores-Laura. Evelyn is a shining example of what it means to make sure everyone feels included, supported, and valued. She is not only a wonderful friend to all, but she also goes out of her way to help others succeed. Whether she is assisting her Spanish-speaking classmates, helping a friend get started on their station work, or simply making sure everyone has a fair chance to participate. Evelyn leads with kindness and fairness in everything she does. One of the most special things about Evelyn is that she understands the importance of taking turns and sharing the spotlight. She knows that everyone deserves a chance to learn, grow, and shine, and she models this every single day in the way she interacts with both her classmates and her teachers. Evelyn, your fairness, kindness, and willingness to help others make our school a better place. Thank you for making sure that every student in our classroom feels included and supported. We are so lucky to have you as part of our school family. Let's give a big round of applause for our Diamond Award.
She doesn't want to say anything. So I have the honor of also recognizing students for West Oak Intermediate School for the core value of equity. Today, I have the privilege of recognizing three remarkable students who exemplify leadership initiative and the true spirit of problem-solving and equity, Louisa, Daria, and Samantha. At the start of this school year, Louisa and Daria noticed a challenge in the lunchroom trays that were not being cleaned or stacked properly, creating extra work for the incredible staff who keep our lunchroom running smoothly. Instead of just observing the problem, they did something extraordinary. They found a solution. They proposed a simple yet effective idea, having older students guide their peers in properly cleaning and stacking their trays in the lunchroom. They took their idea to their friend Samantha, who eagerly joined them in their mission. With teamwork, determination, and a proactive mindset, they brought their solution to the administrators and worked with Mrs. Vedder in the lunchroom and made their vision a reality. What stands out most about their actions is that they demonstrated the core value of equity in a meaningful way. They recognize that fairness isn't just about having the same opportunities. It's about making sure everyone has the support they need to contribute and succeed. By stepping up and to help in the lunchroom, they ensured that the workload was more balanced and that our staff, who worked tirelessly every day, were given the respect and consideration that they deserve. They saw a small but meaningful way to create a more positive, just, and supportive environment for everyone. Now, every day, these three students dedicate their time to keeping the lunchroom organized and efficient. Their efforts not only help the lunchroom staff, but also set a wonderful example for their peers, showing us all that when you see a problem, don't just complain, step up, and create a solution. Louisa, Daria, and Samantha, we are so proud of your leadership and commitment to making our school a better and more equitable place for all. Your actions embody kindness, responsibility, and power of teamwork. Thank you for making such a positive difference. Let's give them all a well-deserved round of applause. Congratulations. Congratulations, ladies, and sparkle on. And they told me they do not want to say anything. Okay. And Mrs. Sklar would like to recognize our student from West Oak Middle School. And Mrs. Sullivan.
So we would like to recognize Ren today. Ren is the kind of person whose presence is known the moment that she steps in the room. I first had the privilege of meeting her in sixth grade when she was a new student at our school, and one of the first things she asked me about, and I don't know if she remembers this, was band. Do you remember that? Something so simple, yet it's a memory that has stuck with me all these years. And she was just genuinely curious, and from the very start, she exuded a confidence and a vibrant energy that was impossible not to notice.
But what has always stood out most about Ren is her unwavering commitment to equity and fairness. She's the type of person who deeply believes that everyone deserves to be treated with kindness, respect, and dignity, no matter who they are. From the start, Ren never hesitated to stand up for what's right, especially when it came to ensuring others were treated justly. She's the first to recognize when someone is being overlooked or excluded, and without hesitation, she steps in to make sure everyone feels seen, heard, and valued.
What I admire most about Ren is her spirit, and what stood out to me from the very beginning is how truly authentic she is. No matter what the situation she found herself in, she never tried to be anything other than who she is. I've seen her step up for others in ways that show her heart is just as big as her spirit. She's the first to offer help or the first to be there for someone in need, whether it's someone who just needs a friend, a support system, or just a little bit of motivation. Ren's spirit and confidence knows no bounds, and she's the type of person who can give you a pep talk and make you feel ready to conquer your day. She doesn't do it for recognition, she just does it because she believes it's the right thing to do. Her sense of justice and equity for people shines through everything she does.
Ren is one of a kind, and we are so lucky to know her and have her as part of the Wolf Pack here at West Oak. Thank you for being you and sharing your spirit and sense of equity with all of us here.
I'm actually really surprised. I said, "I know she's gonna say something," and she said, "No." All right, well, I know she's got a presentation coming up, but thank you, families and friends, for coming and supporting our staff and our students. This is something that we hold near and dear to our hearts by recognizing such amazing people in our community. Our second presentation this evening is the West Oak Middle School Learning Spotlight. So I'm gonna hand the floor over to Mr. Peterson, our principal, and then he will introduce our presentation.
Right, the feeling of nervousness, I love it. All right, well, first of all, good evening, everyone. You know, thank you, Dr. Sharmel Lewis, for allowing us to be able to spotlight, you know, the things that we've been up to here at the middle school. And really, I am truly grateful for the people that are here in the building. You know, not only the people off to my left, but also the people, the young adults off to our right. This has been a year that we have kind of gone to the drawing board and really just kind of dove into like, how can we really be aggressive? Whereas Dr. Cunningham, be aggressive, but also just make our school the best that it can be. And, you know, we've really approached this year as, hey, if we have an idea, let's try it out and let's see where it goes. And let's just use our creativity and just do what we can just to maximize what we can have to offer and then maximize our ability just to connect with our kids. So I'm going to, you know, turn it over to our BLT first. They're gonna highlight a few of our bigger wins here for this year. And then from there, you know, we'll turn it over to... Ms. Grubb's gonna turn over to our newly formed Student SEO Panel in regards to that club and just kind of some general thoughts on how this school year has gone. All right, BLT, ready?
Okay, I'm like the guinea pig here, I get to go first. So for the first slide, I just wanted to talk a little bit about our Tier 3 Math program. One of our biggest struggles is trying to get kids to exit Tier 3 programs over the years. And this year, we've done an outstanding job. We've started using Vmath and maneuvering the middle to close learning gaps and provide students with adjusted-paced materials and standards-based warmups. So that's made a huge difference. As far as new curriculum goes, math, we started using Invisions, which is both a workbook and an online resource. Invisions provides multiple resources throughout real-life world problems, computation problems, vocabulary, and reteaching worksheets. Magma Math has also been started this year. That is an online resource that gives teachers an opportunity to kind of differentiate assignments for students and align them with CCSM standards. Science, we've instituted a new TWIG curriculum in all three grade levels. Sixth through eighth grade are now aligned and support both Stevenson and Mundeline High School standards and are discipline-based at each grade level. SPED has instituted an extreme reading program for our students working with reading comprehension. And Invision's math is also able to be differentiated to different levels, so that's been very helpful. We are also utilizing SIPs for some of our students who are working on basic word reading and decoding. Project Lead the Way, we've started using robotics and automation program this year. And that's basically gotten us to the point we always wanted to be at with Project Lead the Way, where every year, kids are leveling up one tier with their Project Lead the Way program. And then as far as Level 3, Marzano's High Reliability Schools, we successfully achieved both Levels 1 and 2, and we're focusing on Level 3. Thank you.
Two hundred two of our students received the Honorable Status. So that's ninety, over ninety percent of our students. The new cellphone policy, our wonderful Yonder pouches, have been extremely successful. So we are hoping that it continues to be successful. And then we started some new clubs this year, the Theater Club, the Cosmetology Club, and of course, the L Projects.
All right, we started to do more with peer observations this year, which was a way to engage and support for our colleagues. It was a way for us to share our successes and our challenges within the classroom. It was also a way for the staff to walk away with new ideas and insights. We did a PAC Partners, which was a way for the wheel of guessing to choose partners within the staff. They were new each trimester. It was a way to connect and network with others in the building besides just your content and your grade-level teams. We updated our PLC format. It was agenda-focused, and we honed in a lot on collaboration. It was focused on our anchor standards. We analyzed data. We enhanced student engagement. We approved student growth. We had PD and PDIS, which was run by our instructional coaches and our SEL coach. And we had planned out topics which we knew ahead of time. Standard-based grading. We're still in the thick of it. We have made changes along the way. We had made accommodations through Power School to help improve with the letter grades. We're still working out kinks, but overall, teachers and students have adjusted and are moving forward, and I think we're all a little more comfortable now. And then with our unit plans, this is never a once-and-done. So we are currently adjusting them to add our language and learning targets, and we're adding more rigor and relevance to our content areas.
So we have also added a new progress monitoring tool for our special education students and our kids in the reading and math intervention programs called FastBridge. And it allows us to actively monitor the kids that are going through the interventions to see if they are making growth. It's been very productive for us because we've been able to see, like, real-time the growth that they are showing, and it's been great to see our kids and see what they've done this year. We have adopted a new push-in model for all of our students in the special education NEL programs. Our kids are now integrated into the general education program, and then they are pulled out for small group, like, more of a small-group model, but they are all in the general education classes and receiving the same support that everyone else is receiving. So they're being exposed to their grade-level peers and the grade-level ideas, which is allowing them to have access to all the same things that everybody else is. And that is going wonderfully, and the kids have, we've seen huge growth in social, emotional, and also academics as well.
And then for the new PBIS approach, it has decreased sixty percent in referrals, and we have a decrease of sixty-six percent in suspensions. This has really been because we have become more consistent at the Tier 1 level and putting strategies in place at the Tier 1 level. So for all of our students, making sure we're using that common language and that referrals are written with that common language as well. And then for enhanced SEL approach, we've implemented quite a few new programs this year. We have prevention, which will be starting in the spring, that gives strategies to different students who are identified by their personality type by questionnaire they filled out, and it will give them strategies to help them through difficult situations. Project Snowflake, we partnered with Stevenson as well as Omni Youth Services to work with our seventh-grade students to promote mental health, well-being, as well as substance abuse prevention. And Tucul for Drugs, we partner with Nikasa, which is another mental health agency in the community, and that's also to teach substance abuse prevention and strategies for healthy decision-making. And then we've slowly started implementing character strong this year and hope to implement it fully at the Tier 1 level next school year.
So my slide is the best slide, and I feel like there's so many cool things that we're doing inside the classroom, for sure. And this is kind of focusing more on what we're doing outside the classroom. As you can see, seventy-five percent of students have participated in extracurriculars. So many kids have a safe space, and they feel like they belong, they can do sports, clubs, and that is an awesome number. And I truly believe that if kids like coming to school and they feel safe and welcome, that that's gonna reflect in the classroom. And of course, the best for last, Princess Polly being on our campus is just a dream come true. The smiles that she brings. I feel like people who know me at school, I have a fanny pack, and it jingles, right? And one time, I was jingling in the hallway, and someone ran out of the bathroom, and they were so disappointed to see me because they thought it was gonna be Princess Polly, which was fine with me because I feel that same joy when I see Princess Polly and Dr. Berger. So thank you for bringing her to our campus.
Okay, so something new this year is the Student SEO Panel, and this is an initiative that we started this year after just wanting to build that stronger connection with each and every single one of our students. So these students were chosen from each of their grade levels by their teachers as students who show leadership, and they have been working really hard. And we meet together to just talk about things that they like about school, areas that they want to see improve, and then they give suggestions for things that they think they want to improve on. So we have them here today, which is really exciting. I know they're so excited, they've prepped these questions, and they're ready to go. So for the first question, how would you describe your experiences at West Oak Middle School?
Can you repeat the question, please?
How would you describe your experiences at West Oak Middle School?
It's been fun, and I learned a lot. I like all the teachers mostly. I have a lot of friends there.
Anyone else want to answer that one? Okay, have you been able to make connections with teachers within the building? And if yes, what did they do to help make connections with you?
A lot of teachers helped make connections. They asked about our day, our interests, and like, just overall, they know us, and they know who we hang out with, what we like to do.
They like, they like, at the beginning of the year, they ask us like what we like, our interests, and they like, throughout the year, they like, did stuff that like, we put on like our interests so we could like adjust, and we could like, like, like the teacher better, like, like, I don't know how to like say it, but like that.
What is going well with West Oak Middle School? I know, it's a tough question. What are some things that we can still work on as a school? Nothing? We're the best school ever? Normally when we meet, they share a lot more, but they've been really good with sharing their ideas and suggestions of things that they noticed within the school, whether it's within themselves or friend groups or their friends. And so they've been leaders with that. So it's really building those connections with every student and learning how as teachers, we can continue to do that, but then how can we get the students involved as well? So, good job.
Okay, so.
Can I just respond?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you all for coming. I know it takes a lot of courage and bravery to stand or sit in front of a room full of adults. So congratulations. But this panel was put together by Mr. Peterson and Ms. Scrub in a response to our social emotional learning survey that the students take. And so we've gotten some feedback that there were some areas that the teachers needed to grow or respond to. And so we put a group of students together, the middle school did, and really took that feedback to heart of ways that we can level up and improve and lean into more of what we're doing to connect with kids. So they can continue to feel safe and welcome and enjoying their middle school experience and they can learn. So I, again, thank you for, you all for being here, but also for the teachers and Mr. Peterson for putting this together because it's sometimes it's hard to hear feedback of areas maybe that we need to grow or get better in. And then it's the best to hear it from the authentic source, which is our students. So, thank you. It's a work in progress and I'm proud of it.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think you hit the nail on the head here with that. You know, we're always, you know, we're always looking to improve. And you know, this is something that we want to, we include everybody's voice. And you know, not only, I know you guys have heard, you know, the student ambassadors present, but we also wanted to include, you know, an alternative voice as well. And in regards to just getting a full range of ways in which we can continue to improve and connect with kids. So, you know, thank you, guys. I know this isn't easy, like Dr. Sharma Lewis said, but I appreciate you guys being here. And I appreciate your guys' strength and the way you can articulate your answers and how opinionated you are. You know, it's been, it's been impressive. And I am speaking for the eighth graders that are here. I'm, I'm going to miss you guys. And, and you guys are, have definitely left a mark on our school. So thank you. All right. So along with, along with this, we, we just put together a, a short little video on some, some pictures. And, you know, and I didn't show this as Student SEO Panel yesterday. We did prep for this, by the way. But I said I wouldn't show this to them until now. So they've, they've had to wait for a day. So. I bet you guys didn't know that those pictures existed, but they do. So there they are. So, you know, you know, along with just having an excellent group of kids, I couldn't be more humbled and just appreciative of the people behind me here. This is, this for the, for me here, this BLT is, is just absolutely amazing. They are completely selfless, collaborative, solutions-based, and I couldn't do it without them. And I love you guys and I thank you guys for all your hard work because it's been a lot, a lot of work and we've had a successful, successful year because of it. Speaking of success, by the way, yes, we, we were, we were re-designated as a national, national forum and an Illinois Horizon Schools to Watch. We are looking forward to celebrating that in Washington DC here this summer. And, and we're looking forward to selling, celebrating that with our kids as well. So, any questions?
That concludes our presentations for the evening. I want to thank our Student SEL Panel, our Building Leadership Team. Thank you so much, Mr. Peterson, for all of your great work. It's a great presentation, very informative. And I love how you just continue to grow and level up, lean in and always sparkle on. Thank you. Mr. Hanson, did you get all the pictures you needed from everybody? Okay, wonderful. Thank you. And families and friends, thank you so much for coming and supporting our students, our staff and our district. I have never heard them not say anything. Those kids, they're always talking.
Okay. Now we will move on to our business agenda for the evening. Items on the business agenda, there's a mixed amount of items. Most are for action and we have one for review at the end. The first item on the business agenda is the Omnibus Vote Agenda. Items under the Omnibus Vote Agenda are considered routine and are non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If any one board member, staff or administrator or citizen, we should have a separate vote on any item or items. That item or items will be pulled from the Omnibus Vote Agenda and voted on separately. Be it resolved that the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the Omnibus Vote Agenda items A through D as listed. May I have a motion to approve, please? That motion is approved. The next item up for action on the business agenda is personnel. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have three new hires. May I have a motion to approve, please? That motion is also approved. The next item up for action is approving the District Leadership Team contracts. Whereas the Board of Education has reviewed the contract proposals for the District Leadership Team for fiscal year 2025-2026 school year. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the District Leadership Team contracts for the fiscal twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented below. May I have a motion to approve, please? That motion is also approved. The next item up for action is approving student fees. Mr. Rogers, did you want to speak to that at all?
Yes. So as the memo said, this is the first student fee increase I've been recommending in the last few years. It's a small monetary increase to help offset some of the cost of the yonder pouches that we purchased. The rest of it, we'd supplement with a grant to pay for the, really just the refresh that we have to do every year. Someone says eighth grade students graduate will refresh one class for.
Does anyone have any questions about the fees? Okay. Then be it resolved, the Diamond Lake Seventy-Six Board of Education accepts and approves the student fees as presented. May I have a motion to approve, please? That motion is also approved. And then the last item on the business agenda this evening is one for review, and that is the Summer 2025 Projects.
Yes. So two, I wouldn't say very exciting projects, but two necessary projects that we have on there. So Chris Tivido did a great job on just including some pictures and some rationale. So we're in the middle of soliciting a lot of bids for various improvement projects. And these are really just some masonry work and concrete work that we have. So Diamond Lake is in need of concrete repair. We received two options, one just to repair the, the sections in question and then one to replace it. So based on all the success we've had at Diamond, at West Oak Campus replacing that sidewalk, we are recommending we replace it. It's a, it's a fairly nominal cost to do that, that much concrete. And we're just lucky that we have a partner in place that's done a lot of different site work for us in the past. We got a really competitive number from them. And then just a reminder, we are doing this all like internally, not working with construction partners. We are saving a pretty significant cost just soliciting quotes ourself. So that was the Diamond Lake sidewalk. And the masonry work at West Oak Campus is really all in the back of the building. But there's a lot of significant cracking we've put off for quite enough time. And this will just help with moisture remaining out of the building and just protecting our building's envelope. So besides those two projects, there is a list of some ongoing projects we're getting quotations for. I saw it getting quotes for. So that, the most substantial one would be we're doing the front entryway at Diamond Lake School. So that's a project we're going to get some proposals for, draw some diagrams for you, but really just repurposing how the, the, the building entrance functions, both from a safety element and just a building usability. So all these projects are going to be below our bidding threshold, which is thirty-five thousand. I still want to bring it to the board just to review and approve.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
The, the sidewalk repair, so if we do a full replacement, what is the longevity? Did they give you an anticipated, like how many years could we expect them to be working? I mean, working sidewalks without needing more repair? And how would the repair, much time would that give us? I mean, I, I trust what you're saying. I just was curious to know what the, what the difference is.
That's a great question. And there is no difference in terms of the work being performed. It's just the sections of the work being performed. So either way, the concrete's going to be saw cut out, fully removed, and then new concrete would be poured back in. So each one has at least a twenty-year lifespan, as long as we take care of it from a salting perspective. It's, it hasn't been repaired since originally put in. So it's been, it's been going well. It's just been falling and cracking for quite some time. So for, for ten thousand dollars more and get that much additional square feet, that's, it's, it's pretty worthwhile cost just based on them being out here already.
Does anyone have any other questions? Okay. That wraps up our business agenda for the evening. Moving on to board discussion. Do we have any items for board discussion this evening? No? Okay. Freedom of information requests, we did not have any notices and communications. They all seem to be really from CEDOL. Do you want to talk about that, the March meeting, John? Did you go to the March meeting? Okay. So then they'll have like a full year essentially to find a new superintendent. Okay. I don't think we have anything else for us to communicate. Public comments and petitions on non-agenda items. Do we have any public comments or petitions on non-agenda items this evening? Nice to see you, ladies. Okay, moving on to others. I know that there's, Peter has something. I just wanted to remind everyone, the statement of economic interest, you all should have gotten your email. For those of you who are not running again, I don't believe you need to do that because it's due. Okay. Well, it's because it's due after, it's due after the election. Yeah. So I just sort of. Bless you. So I just wanted to remind everyone to please take a minute and fill that out. You should have all of that information emailed to you from the Lake County Clerk. Don't delete it by mistake as, yes, because it is individualized. So we cannot help you with your password. And then I will turn the floor over to Dr. Cunningham.
Thank you. So this topic, we just wanted to make sure we brought to the board's attention. It has to do with our Full Service Community Support Grant Partnership. Essentially, we're having to go really fast on something. So I'm going to give you just a little bit of background and I'll explain why we're doing this. So we've been doing our work with Marzano Resources for the last few years. That's our High Reliability School Certification. And we've largely done that really on our own. There's really about four districts in Illinois that are pretty far along the process ourselves. North Chicago, North Shore, and then Belvedere is probably the other one. And so we've, again, we've done this largely ourselves. And so we were working with, because the FSCS also works in North Chicago, we had a conversation around could we potentially look at partnership? Because Marzano Resources does a lot of research and of practice work around standards-based report cards and proficiency scales. Like their group literally wrote the books on standard-based report cards, for example, on models of instruction in the classroom. The vocab, when we talked at the, with the board about vocabulary at the winter assessment, they've, they've, a lot of the work around vocabulary.
they've, they've, a lot of the work around vocabulary in the US and incorporating schools comes out of this group. And so we had a conversation about potentially onboarding it. And what happened was the grant came to us basically last week and said, we have some concerns that we're going to get frozen out of funding potentially because it all comes to the Department of Education. And so we need to move very quickly. And so we were kind of in the process of discussing a proposal like this. So we gave it to them. It's a very, it doesn't cost any of our own money, but it is a lot because it's everything. It's, it's professional development for them over three phases, which can be three to five years. A ton of support from the group coming into our schools to ensure we're doing a lot of great work. But we're having to kind of do this before we've developed what our three phases are going to be. And so I just wanted to make sure we're transparent with the board that we're, the FSCS is basically going to sign off on this to try to get this done by the Friday deadline. And we still have to do some of the planning work that we would normally do and then talk to the board about what we're doing with a lot of a significant portion of the funding. It's just a little bit backwards right now. So we just want to let the board know we're about to move a big rock, a lot of money. This will be probably the one big curricular thing we'll do through the grant. But it's going to, I'm incredibly excited because it's, you're getting preeminent experts that are going to be working with our district for the next three to five years. And we can target some of the things we've been trying to do and do it incredibly well. And it's going to, it's not, it's going to do nothing but benefit our students. So I get really excited about it, but it's really weird to say, by the way, we're rushing through a massive investment by Friday.
Anyone have any questions about that?
My own time, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for taking the initiative to make sure that this gap can be secured. I think it will benefit. Thank you for doing that. I know it's hard to jump in and have to have something ready to go even in a skeleton sort of phase. So thank you for that.
Well, I appreciate, I want to just pull Eric into it too, because he's played a huge role in navigating the finances of it and different things we're doing in summer school and other places with them, so.
Awesome. Thank you. We don't have any closed session, correct?
No.
Okay. Then since we don't have any executive session for this evening, then we will, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan? Ms. Angarola? Bayless? Yes? Becker?
Yes. Great. Thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful spring break if we don't see you before then. Yes, it would be great.